The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Troop. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Triplet. Alderman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Howard. Alderman Florida. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Cruzen. President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Young. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Carter. Alderman Cruzen. Twenty present.
Quorum being present, we would be led today in prayer by Rabbi Fleischer, better known as Rabbi Randy from Central Reform Congregation. So Rabbi Randy?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's really an honor to be here. Good morning. And Shalom. I bring greetings from Central Reform Congregation. You know, we're the only Jewish synagogue in the city of St. Louis. And we love being in the city and we love being part of the city. We have a sculpture on the Waterman side of our building. Maybe some of you have seen it. It's seven pillars kind of coming close to one another. Some people have told me they thought it's a Jewish Stonehenge. But actually, what the sculpture represents is the Jewish ideal of Tikun Olam. Tikun Olam literally in Hebrew means the repair of the world. It is about our human obligation to heal and repair and transform society. When we dedicated that sculpture, one of the ministers from our neighborhood came and said, when he looks at that sculpture, for him, it represents our neighborhood coming together. And so this is my prayer for you, this body, this group of decision-makers. I pray that your work, whatever it is, whatever the details are, is always about Tikun. It's always about repair. It's always about bringing us together. Across our amazing diversity, we should think of ourselves as one. And we rely on leaders like you to help bring us together. And so my prayer and my blessing, as you do this holy work of Tikun Olam, of repairing this city, of making the world a better place, I give blessings to you of wisdom and compassion and righteousness and justice and holiness. May it be so and may it be God's will. Amen.
That was a beautiful prayer. Let's give Rabbi Randy a round of applause, so hopefully he'll come. Rabbi, we want you back to do this again for us. Introduction, round of guests. Any introduction, round of guests? Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, I'd like to welcome Celeste Reader from the Realtors as my honored guest today. Welcome, Celeste.
Alderman from the 26th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. My honored guest would be Vervis Jones, the former Comptroller, and also a resident of the 26th Ward. Thank you.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. My honored guest today would be Ronnie Hour, excuse me. That's in the cool leisure room.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guests this morning Ms. Maggie Parker and John Stratton with Diocese of Missouri.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap us up?
Yes, sir. I'm proud and pleased to have back from his world tour, touring all the Anheuser-Busch breweries around the world, back in St. Louis, Mr. Fred Stefan.
Alderman from the 11th. I love that jacket. I don't think I could pull it off, but I love that one. I like that one. Approval in a minute. Alderman from 13th, you recognize on approval in a minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the minutes of the June 8th meeting.
Move by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
Would anyone like to take any bills off of Alderman from the 7th?
Doing honored guest, I had a constituent of mine who's new to the city of St. Louis, native of Philadelphia, Ms. Beverly Relford has joined us today. So she came down to-
Well, welcome. Thanks for coming, Mr. President.
See how we do things in St. Louis.
Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal accounters? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal accounters? Dispense with lying items, 7 through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 100, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Honors to Regulate Employer and Employee Working Relationships Between the City and All Employees Under the Classified Service, Including a Compensation Plan, Terms and Conditions of Employment Benefits, Leaves of Absence, and Authorization for a Deferred Compensation Plan, Allocating Certain Other Employees to Agree with the Rate and Including an Emergency Clause. Board Bill 101, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Honors to Repeal Ordinance 68708, Establishing the Salaries of Employees in the Sheriff's Office Containing an Emergency Clause. Board Bill 102, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Honors Relating to the Appointment of and Salaries of Certain Employees in the Collective of Revenue's Office, Containing an Emergency Clause. Board Bill 103, sponsored by Alderman Davis and Honors Recommended by the Board of Public Service to Conditionally Vacate Travel in Irregular Portion of Compton Avenue Adjacent to City Block 2161, Beginning at Shoto. Board Bill 104, sponsored by Alderman Troop and Honors Pertaining to Solid Ways Collection and the Billing Process. Board Bill 105, sponsored by Alderman Triplet and Honors Establishing a Four-Way Stop Site at the Intersection of Russell and Oregon by Regulating All East-West Traffic on Russell and Containing an Emergency Clause. Board Bill 106, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Honors Relating to the Employees and Salaries of the Office of the Recorder of Deeds Containing an Emergency Clause. Board Bill 107, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Honors to Regulate Employer and Employee Working Relationships Between the City Medical Examiner's Office, Including a Compensation Plan, Terms and Conditions of Employment, Benefits, Leaves of Absence, Allocating Certain Other Employees to Agree with the Rate and Including an Emergency Clause. Board Bill 108, sponsored by Alderman French and Honors Relating to City Recreation Facility in O'Fallon Park, Authorizing and Directing the Execution of Cooperation Agreement Between the City and YMCA and Authorizing an Appropriation of $126,000 from Special Parks Fund 1122 to Have Offset One-Time Startup Costs and Other Costs Associated with Such Cooperation Agreement. Board Bill 109, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and Honors Amending the Firefighter's Retirement Plan, Providing Additional Cost of Living Increases for Firefighters Disabled Because of an Injury Encurred While Fighting a Fire. Board Bill 110, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Honors Relating to the Office of Circuit Attorney, Allocating the Provisions Established by Section 56.540 to Classes with Grades and a Schedule Setting Minimum and Maximum Salaries for Such Grades by Repealing Section 2 and Replacing Said Section with Provisions of this Ordinance, Providing that Such Salaries Be Paid Bi-Weekly, Providing for Payment of Overtime Wages on an Hourly Basis at the Bi-Weekly Rate When Such Overtime Is Authorized and Necessary by the Circuit Attorney and Containing an Emergency Clause. Board Bill 111, sponsored by Alderman Young and Alderman Wessels and Honors Terminating the Modesta Development Plan, Ballpark Village Development Area, Authorizing Termination of Development Agreement, Dissolving the Special Allocation Fund Therefore and Authorizing Other Related Actions in Connection Therewith. Board Bill 112, sponsored by Alderman Young and Alderman Wessels and Honors Designating a Portion of the City Generally Bound by 8th Street on the West, Walnut on the North, South Broadway on the East, and Clark on the South as a Development Area Under the Authority of the Missouri Downtown and Rural Economic Stimulus Act, Approving a Development Plan for the Development Area and Development Project Therein, Adopting Development Financing Within the Development Area, Establishing a Special Allocation Fund Containing a Severability Clause. Board Bill 113, sponsored by Alderman Young and Alderman Wessels and Honors Recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, Authorizing the City to Assign State and Local Modesta Revenues, Dedicated Municipal Revenues, Contractually Pledged City Revenues, CID Revenues, and TDD Revenues Attributionable to the Ballpark Village Development Area for a Purpose of Paying the Principal and Interest of Certain Bonds to be Issued by the Industrial Development Authority. Board Bill 114, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and Honors Recommended by the Port Authority Commission, Authorizing and Directing the Mayor and the Comptroller to Enter into a Second Amendment to the Lease By and Between the City and Through Its Mayor and Comptroller and ACL Transportation Services. Board Bill 115, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Honors Relating to the Positions, Position, Classifications, and Salaries of the Employees of the Treasurer's Office and Containing an Emergency Clause. Board Bill 116, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Honors Relating to the Position, Classifications, and Salaries of the Parking Division Employees Containing an Emergency Clause. Board Bill 117, sponsored by Alderman Young and Alderman Wessels and Honors Affirming Adoption of a Development Plan, Development Area, and Development Project Under the Authority of the Missouri Downtown and Rural Economic Stimulus Act, Authorizing and Directing the Execution of a Development Agreement Between the City and Ballpark Village Development Corporation, Designating Ballpark Village Development Corporation as Developer of the Development Area Containing a Severability Clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Rufford. Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move for suspending the rules for the introduction of a board bill.
Move by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 25th. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. On your desk, you'll find Board Bill Number 118, and I'd like to move that we introduce this bill today.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Troop. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Triplet. Alderman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Howard. Alderman Florida. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Carter. Twenty-two, aye votes, one present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the 7th and introduce Board Bill Number 118. Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill Number 118 to HUdgs.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 114; to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 104; to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 109; to the Parks Committee, Board Bill 108; to the Streets Committee, Board Bills 103, 104, and 105; to the Public Employees Committee, Board Bills 100, 101, 102, 106, 107, 110, 115, and 116; and to the Housing Committee, Board Bill 118. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Madam Clerk, please assign to HUdgs Board Bills Number 111, 112, 113, and 117.
So noted.
Again, that's 111, 112, 113, and 117 to HUdgs.
So noted.
Second reading?
The following board bill was reported out of Streets Committee, Board Bill 99, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and Honors Establishing a Four-Way Stop Site for All Traffic Approaching the Intersection of Penrose and Darnby, Containing an Emergency Clause. Following Board Bill was reported out of the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 31, Committee Substitute, Sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Young, Conway, Wessels, Howard, Florida, Behringer, Rhodey, Davis, Ogilvy, Cone, and Cruzen. And Honors Submitting to the Qualified Voters a Proposed Amendment to the Charter, Restructuring the Board of Aldermen as a Body of Twelve Aldermen, Representing Twelve Wards, Providing a Transition Schedule for Such Changes, Providing for an Election to be Held for Voting on the Proposed Amendment Containing an Emergency Clause. That's the extent of second readings.
Dispense with lying item 14. Alderman from the 23rd, please state-
Board Bill 31 is actually Board Bill 31 Committee Substitute, and it was changed from 12 to 14. So it's Board Bill 31 Committee Substitute-
And it's 14.
Goes from 12 down to, I'm sorry, goes from 12 to 14 wards. And it was just-
Madam Clerk, could you please read, reread that Board Bill Number 31, adding Committee Substitute and adding the change that they had in committee this morning, changing that number from 12 to 14? Could you please reread that paragraph with those changes?
Fourteen wards?
Fourteen, yeah. Those are changes they add in the committee this morning.
Board Bill 31 Committee Substitute, Sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Young, Conway, Wessels, Howard, Florida, Behringer, Rhodey, Davis, Ogilvy, Cone, and Cruzen. And Honors Submitting to the Qualified Voters a Proposed Amendment to the Charter Restructuring the Board of Aldermen as a Body of Twelve, 14 Aldermen, Representing 14 Wards, Providing a Transition Schedule for Such Changes, Providing for an Election to be Held for Voting on the Proposed Amendment Containing an Emergency Clause. That's the extent of second readings.
With dispensal lying item 14, perfection consent. Madam Clerk, actually move Board Bill Number One Committee Substitute from the perfection consent calendar to the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill 94, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Cruzen and Honors Recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, Authorizing a Supplemental Appropriation, Amending Ordinance 68882, The City Annual Operating Plan for Fiscal Year 2011-2012, Appropriating and Setting Apart Projected Access General Fund Revenues to Address Certain Expenditures in the General Fund for the Current Fiscal Year in the Amount of $3,550,000, Containing an Emergency Clause. Board Bill 52, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, Carter, French, Schmidt, and Cone, and Honors Pertaining to Sunscreening Devices Applied to the Windshield or Windows of Motor Vehicles Containing a Penalty, Severability, and Emergency Clause. Board Bill 54, sponsored by Alderman French, and Honors Authorizing and Directing the Street Commissioner to Take All Necessary Actions to Honorarily Designate the 3,800 Block of Clarence as Reverend Robert D. Strong Senior Avenue. Board Bill 56, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and Honors Authorizing and Directing the Street Commissioner to Take All Necessary Actions to Honorarily Designate the 1,500 Block of Penrose as Pastor Emeritus Charlie Dooley Avenue. Board Bill 87, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and Honors Recommended and Approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, Ratifying and Adopting the Actions of the Mayor and the Comptroller, The Grand Agreement for a Maximum Federal Obligation of $12,763,863 for the Reimbursement of Direct Costs Associated with the Rehabilitation of Runway 12R, 30L, Containing an Emergency Clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from 13th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills and the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from 13th, I'll entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 15th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill One Committee Substitute, Sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Cruzen, Budget for Fiscal Year July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number One Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Board Bill One, as I think all of you know, is the budget for next year.
Would you like to make motion?
And I move for perfection of Board Bill Number One.
Move by Alderman from the 28th, second by Alderman from the 15th. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you. Now, to reiterate, Board Bill One is the budget for next year. This budget represents an increase of about 3% over the year that we're ending right now, over the 2012 budget. The increased revenues came from sales tax, payroll taxes, earnings tax slightly. Real estate taxes are down, as many of you might expect based on what you know about your own real estate values. The economy, both in the city of St. Louis and across the country, remains pretty sluggish. So we are continuing to deal with a very tough budget situation. The budget, as it was originally presented to us, called for a reduction of 80 police officers, 26 firefighters, closing two firehouses. It did allow for a very slight raise for all city employees and both police and fire department matrix increases. That raise was 2%. Some of you will remember. City employees have not had a raise for four years. So 2% over four years is certainly not much of a raise. So I think that, you know, the city employees who work hard for all of us and all of our constituents every day deserve a little bit of a bump. So that is in this current year budget. The primary reason that we are in such a tough budget situation, in addition to, of course, the economy, is our pension obligations. Back in 2001, the city was contributing about $20 million a year over all of its pension plans. This year, the city will contribute $93 million a year over all of its pension plans. So that's an increase of close to $75 million. I guess about $73 million to be exact. And how have we managed that increase when certainly our revenues have not gone up anyplace close to that amount? We've really managed it by cutting, cutting, and continuing to cut in every department, and I know all of you know that. And that is continuing this year. So this year's pension obligation is about $93 million. It's roughly $32 million to ERS, or the Employee Retirement System, that's non-uniformed employees. $32 million to the Police Department Retirement System, and $29 million to the Fire Department Retirement System. If you break that down per employee, it's about $7,400 for every ERS employee, $23,000 for every police officer, and $43,000 for every fireman, firewoman employee. So it's just a very, very tough situation that we find ourselves in. But it's still the job of the Ways and Means Committee and certainly of the Board of E&amp;A and all of us to present and adopt a balanced budget. So that's what we're doing here today. To balance the budget, we did a number of things. One of them that I know all of you know about is we continued to reduce your allocation of ward capital improvement money by 25%. Now, 25% isn't a whole lot, except it impacts how many streets you can pave, how many alleys you can pave, how many dumpsters you can buy, how many sidewalks you can replace under 50/50, how many trees you can plant. And so that ward capital money reduction certainly impacts all of our constituents by impacting the amount of money that we have to spend on those basic things. The Ways and Means Committee was, I think, very successful this year in trying to do more with less, if you will. And I would, of course, give that credit also to E&amp;A and Paul Payne and the Budget Division, who, all of these folks, struggled through this budget all year long. And I will say, as the, you all know, this is the first year that I've chaired the Ways and Means Committee. I am completely impressed with the amount of knowledge and the handle that all of the Budget Division and the city departments heads have on their own budget and how they are all trying to do more with less also. So, to sort of wrap this up a bit, the Ways and Means Committee recommended a number of additions to this budget because we felt that those were things that we needed to support our citizens. E&amp;A adopted some of those things. And so what we were successful in doing is adding 30 police officers back to this budget. The original budget called for 80 police officers to be cut out of this budget. I have never been to a neighborhood meeting yet, and I bet none of you have either, where people said to me, "Oh, I just see too many policemen." Any of you ever get that comment at a neighborhood meeting? I don't think so. So, you know, one of the 50 police officers, one of the grants, federal grants that we have is going away, and so that accounts for a reduction of 50 police officers next year. These cuts, by the way, will be made through attrition. But Ways and Means was successful in getting 30 police officers added back, provided that we're able to save some money on the amount that we have to contribute to the pension plans this year. And we all know that there are pension bills before us, and that's for another time to discuss those pension bills. But we are hopeful, and the Ways and Means was hopeful, and the Board of E&amp;A agreed that there should be some savings able to be achieved this year in the pension contribution so that we can add back the 30 police officers, which I think is a priority for all of us, citywide. We were also able to restore the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to its full contribution, which has been cut in previous years. We added $250,000 to the Recreation Division. We added one position for one more liquor control officer in the Excise Division. I think all of you probably know that, oh, a year or maybe two years ago, the state essentially got rid of all liquor enforcement and put all that back on the cities and municipalities, certainly on the city of St. Louis. That's been tough on us. And if we're gonna uphold our liquor laws, we've gotta have liquor control officers to respond to complaints and make inspections. So we did add back one liquor control position. And those are the highlights, if you will, of this budget process and how we wrapped it up. I would, of course, be happy to take any questions, but I would ask for your favorable consideration of Board Bill One so that we can pass it and get on to next year. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill Number One Committee Substitute. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Board Bill 12-
Board Bill Twelve, Committee Substitute As Amended, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen, Schmidt, Cruzen, Ortman, Cohn, Conway, Howard, Florida, and Behringer, and ordinance establishing, establishing the firefighter's retirement plan, providing retirement, disability, and death benefits for firefighters and their covered dependents, including severability and effective date clauses and provisions pertaining to the repeal of Chapter four-point-one-eight of the Revised Code.
Alderwoman from the Fifteenth, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill Number Twelve, Committee Substitute As Amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Board. At the request of the sponsor, I'm requesting that Board Bill Twelve, Committee Substitute As Amended, be placed on the informal perfection calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Place Board Bill Number Twelve, Committee Substitute As Amended, on the perfection and formal calendar.
Thank you.
So noted. Board Bill Thirty-two, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Carter, French, Cohn, and Boyd, and ordinance, which amends ordinance six-eight-five-three-six, to clarify that premises where motor vehicle service stations exist aren't limited to five percent package license and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the Twenty-fourth, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill Number Thirty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna request that we move Board Bill Thirty-two to the perfection, the informal perfection calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Place Board Bill Number Thirty-two to, to the perfection and formal calendar.
Anticipate that we will vote on that next Friday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So noted. That's the extent of Board Bills for Perfection.
Alderman from the Eighteenth, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to suspend the rules in order to move Board Bill Eighty-seven, Committee Substitute for Board Bill Number One, and Board Bill Ninety-four to the third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the Eighteenth, entertain a second on that motion. Alderwoman from the Fifteenth, you got it. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Triplet, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldt, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, was that? Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro.
Have some more, Alderman.
Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Triplet, Alderman Arnoldt, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Vacaro. Twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, stay in the motion of the Alderman from the Eighteenth, and suspended the rules for the purposes of moving the aforementioned board bills to the third reading consent calendar. Madam Clerk, third reading consent.
Board Bills Eighty-seven, one committee substitute, Ninety-four, nine, seventeen, nineteen, thirty-six, forty-eight, and forty-nine.
Did you say one?
That's one committee substitute.
Alderman from the Thirteenth, you're recognized on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Board, I ask for a third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Moved by the Alderman from the Thirteenth, second by the Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Triplet, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa.
Have some more.
Alderman Arnoldt, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldt, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Schmidt. Twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of the Alderman from the Thirteenth, and third read and final passage of aforementioned bills.
That's, that's the extent of third reading consent.
Third reading, report of engrossment.
Board Bill Eleven, floor substitute, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, and ordinance pertaining to the Fireman's Retirement System, repealing Section Six of ordinance four-nine-six-two-three and enacting in lieu thereof a new section pertaining to the jurisdiction and authority of the trustees of the Fireman's Retirement System containing an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the Fifteenth, you're recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill Number Eleven.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. At the request of the sponsor, I request to place Board Bill Eleven on the informal third reading calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Place Board Bill Number Eleven on the third reading informal calendar.
So noted. That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills Nine, seventeen, nineteen, thirty-six, forty-eight, forty-nine, Eighty-seven, One Committee Substitute, and Ninety-four.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore, to the end that these may become law. I move for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar, entertain a second on that motion. Second by the Alderwoman from the Fifteenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading.
We have none.
Miss Lane, something?
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday Public Employees Committee Meeting, ten a.m. in the Ca- What's that change? Monday Public Employees Committee Meeting, ten a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Is that correct? Wednesday Housing Meeting, ten a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Thursday Public Employees Committee Meeting, ten a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Also on Thursday Neighborhood Development Meeting at two p.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday Full Board Meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the Eighth.
Good morning, Mr. President, and members of the Board. The Alderwoman from the Fifteenth and the Eighth Ward, both would like to invite everybody in Saint Louis to the Pride Festival this weekend. It's in the better part of the Eighth, Tower Grove Park, which is in mostly the Eighth Ward, but the parade starts right down the middle of the Eighth and the Fifteenth Ward. It is a good time for all. We invite everybody to come out, support our neighborhood, support the community, and show our respect for everyone, plus it's one hell of a good time, so we invite everybody out.
It's Sunday, the parade begins at noon at Utah and Grant.
And elected officials, if you've signed up, be there by eleven o'clock, so you can ride in one of those beautiful convertible cars.
I was just told we have a couple students from Harris-Stowe joining us today also. Could you please stand and be recognized? Alderwoman from the Fourteenth.
I'd like to invite everybody down by the Bevo and let people know the Bevo Mill Restaurant. The historic Bevo Mill Restaurant is open Friday afternoon for cocktails and dinner on the patio. Come on down and look at the place, it's beautiful, and support your local businesses. And I'd also like to say a shout-out to the Harris-Stowe grads, I'm one myself. Thank you.
Excellent. Alderman from the Twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. The Twenty-second Ward will have its regular scheduled ward meeting, the twenty-eighth of June, next Thursday, from six to seven-thirty at Friendly Temple Church, fifty-five fifteen, Martin Luther King Drive. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further, Alderman from the Thirteenth.
The, the schedule set calls for a nine o'clock meeting on Wednesday at HUD's, right? Two oh eight? Is that a typo?
What was the date on that?
Pardon?
It said ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
It was, it was a typo.
It should be ten o'clock.
Yeah, it was a typo for... Madam Clerk, please make note of that, make sure that, that everybody gets to notice that it is at ten o'clock.
So noted.
And not, not as noted in this, in the typo and, and the agenda. Alder, Alderman from the Nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to announce that we're going to have an exciting festival in our Grand Center Locust Business District area this weekend. It's called the Fringe Festival, and it is derived from a festival that was started in Scotland in nineteen forty-seven. It allows for all kinds of performances, musicians and everything, whether they're in venues, on the street, in the park, and I want to say to you that this is magnificent, and I want you to come out and enjoy it. And it'll be all weekend, it'll be going on, and we have available to you online, you can purchase your button, pay for it, you can come to any of the venues, they'll also sell it, so you can start at any point, whether it's at Grand in Washington or at Garrison and Locust. And almost every venue that we have, there are hotels, restaurants, there will be live performances going on. And the young lady that has pulled all this together for us, I'm gonna bring her down to the board before we go out, 'cause you need to feel her energy. I also wanted to say to my residents in the Tiffany neighborhood that on this Thursday we'll have movies in the park, at Tiffany Park, and we'll start probably about seven o'clock gathering, and 'cause we wanna eat lots of popcorn and snow cones and all that good stuff, and the movie starts right at eight fifteen. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman. Any further, Alderman from the Twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. This Sunday at Ivan Prairie Park located at Belton Cabin, we'll be having the free jazz concerts from six to eight. The artist escapes my name right now, I don't know exactly who'll be performing, but it'll be this Sunday from six to eight at Ivan Prairie Park that's Belton Cabin. Also, Thursday, the twenty-eighth, we'll be having our monthly ward meetings, and that's at Belton Barman at Union Memorial Church. We have the board education coming and speaking about a lot of the vacant schools that we have in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the Sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would like to invite everyone to Francis Park this evening for what is being termed the Grub and Groove Event, and this has been put on by a new group called the Saint Louis Hills Young Ambassadors. They are forty and under, they're all professionals, and we're getting them involved in the city, and we're very excited. They've already gotten almost ten thousand hits on their Facebook page. Thank you.
Excellent. Alderwoman from the Seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to invite people to Sulard Market Park tomorrow night for a free concert. Also, if you prefer to go to Lafayette Park, they are offering the movie Princess Bride for all those people who are interested in the movie. However, my, one that I'm most interested in seeing people show up for is, there will be an open house at the Ninth Street Abbey, which is locate, the old church building located on Ninth Street between Sulard and Guyer, on Wednesday night, the twenty-seventh, from five to seven, where we will present the planning process that has been occurring on Sulard Market. We're looking for lots of public input, we'd like to see the shoppers that go to the market come and review our planning and give their comments, so that we have some verification that the direction we're taking is what the public is interested in, or if it isn't, let us know what you think. There'll be computers there, so you can provide feedback, and also you will be able to go online after you've attended this, so that you can see and make comments about the plans. But again, it's Wednesday night, the twenty-seventh, five to seven, at Ninth Street Abbey. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the Thirteenth, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I move to excuse the Alderman from the Third, Fourth, Twelfth, and Twentieth Wards due to necessary absence.
Moved by the Alderman from the Thirteenth, second by the Alderman from the Eleventh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the Thirteenth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, ten a.m., June twenty-ninth.
Moved by the Alderman from the Thirteenth, second by the Alderwoman from the Fourteenth, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.